Standing and joining me in the place of the legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Thank you. We're getting started just a minute or two late tonight. I'd like the record to reflect that the city administrator hid my file when I was visiting with him earlier.
Among other things.
It's all his fault. That's really what I'm saying. Call a meeting to order, council, any issues with the agenda, if not, going to have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Or nays, anyone wishing to vote nay, go ahead. Motion's approved. With regard to the consent agenda, anyone have any questions or comments about the minutes or the other two items that you want to ask questions about or address? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second?
All second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, unanimous. Matters on the agenda tonight that conceivably we could take action on are the Locust Street Bridge Contractor Award, the Mr. Deardoff with regard to hiring Mr. Deardoff and league municipalities with regard to the city administrator search, possible purchase of a vehicle for public works, possible action on recognition of employees at the holiday season. Anyone has any comments on any of those, feel free to come up to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Mark, can we go to you and Darren with regard to the Locust Street Bridge project?
Sure. Darren's here. We opened bid today at three o'clock and Darren's here to make a presentation.
Okay.
Okay, as Mark said, we opened bids this afternoon at three o'clock. We had three bidders on this project. They were both Parga out of Mount Ridge, Multi-Crete out of Wichita, and Hatt Construction here out of Marion. You can see the base bid numbers there. Base bid, well, both Parga was the low on both the base bid and the combination of base bid add alternate. Two hundred ninety thousand was their base bid price, thirty-three, seven, twelve, fifty. We're not releasing the bid tabs until after you guys award, but basically, and that's the way we've been doing them all lately, in case we have to rebid for any reason, we're not exposing anybody's line items. But in letting you know, the grant amount for this one was two thirty-two. So we're about fifty-eight thousand higher than that grant agreement. Now, I've already, we've already discussed with Boots Park this afternoon, I had a meeting with them after the bid opening, to look at alternative ways to get some of that pricing down, and there are ways within that to remove some of that pricing and get closer. Also discussed with city staff, and basically our recommendation today is that we don't award this until one month from now. That way city staff can look at which year they want it to come in on the budget piece or your audit, you know, how that stacks up on your local dollars. And also, we can figure out how much we can trim versus, you know, where we can be at on the whole budget piece, so.
And the contractor was fine with that?
Yeah, the contractor was fine with that. We build a clause into all of our contracts that when we bid out a project like this, there's sixty days from bid opening till you guys have to award before the prices are null and void. So we would be well within that sixty days. So, but I fully believe that off that two ninety, we can probably pretty easily cut at least thirty off of that, just right off the top by changing. We always, as I've told you in the past, oh, maybe not everybody, since some councilors knew, but what we do with our contracts is we build in contingency quantities to our contracts on purpose, so that, like in this case, there might be a thousand foot of curb and gutters, maybe what we bid, knowingly that we only have measured out nine hundred and sixty-two feet, and so we always leave a little bit of slush there. Well, between now and next month, I'll figure out more of these quantities more exact. And a couple of the other things, like we had a lump sum to do tree removal. Well, if we go look at those trees conjunctively with the contractor, and their bid price might have been eighteen thousand to remove these four big trees. Maybe now that they look at it a little closer, we talk about it on site, maybe there's ways, okay, they say, oh, yeah, we can do that probably for fourteen. So there's ways within that to maybe trim some cost out of a couple of those line items, so. We'll have a better idea by that time then too, on that part.
Questions for Mr. Newfeld?
So, that two thirty-two, that was the, that was your engineer estimate?
That was the engineer estimate we sent in, submitted on the grant proposal.
Can you remind me, was this, did we do seventy thirty on this term?
Seventy thirty, right.
So.
The grant, the grant amount, I believe, is one sixty-two, eight ninety, I think. Do that math real quick and see.
Yeah, one sixty-two, excuse me, four hundred.
I think, I remember back on the grant application earlier today, I'm pretty sure it was one sixty-two, eight ninety is what we're getting from KDOT.
So then, anything above and beyond that, that additional fifty-eight thou- fifty-eight, seven is a hundred percent on us?
Correct, yes. And that's why I think there's ways to cut back on that. Just even, just with the contingency quantities, I'll have you a better number by next month than know what kind of dollars we can save.
And then can you remind me what at all?
Okay, so the base bid project was to do both the Elm Street culvert system, which is right there between the old Leland Heiderick property and my office. There's that drainage way that comes down through there. We're replacing that culvert that goes under Elm Street. That's on the base bid. And then fixing the head wall system up on Locust Street, that whole west side of that street and the inlet and the wall piece is on that base bid. Which also includes putting up a pedestrian, we're gonna, that concrete wall that's there now would be gone, and we'd put back a metal railing system up there on that curb, basically. So people walking along, driving along, don't just, you know, fall right off in the creek. All of that's on the base bid. And then the curb and gutter work, where the lake sits right now in front of our office, all of that curb and gutter, starting there, all the way up past the Christian church. There's one new section in there that we would not do. So that side, and then on the other side, there's a section that we did a couple of years ago that's from the Main Street corner on the west side of Elm that goes up and includes Ms. Betty's lower driveway. But then this curb and gutter goes from, starting where we replaced before, on up the west side of Elm Street, up to Lawrence. All of that's in the base bid. The add alternate is the curb work over on Locust, going from that box redo both directions.
You make me laugh with the reference to Ms. Betty.
I have to, everybody's gonna know when I say that.
Do you know Amy? You do? Okay, good.
Oh, yeah, she, she didn't have to deal with her driving capabilities, because by the time Smith moved in, Ms. Betty wasn't driving anymore.
I think she was.
Oh, she was, she?
You do realize that this is a public meeting?
I know, I know, all good things.
If Ms. Betty's listening, I apologize ma'am.
Sounds like an episode of Fried Green Tomatoes or something with the Ms. Betty.
But I knew everybody up here would realize where that driveway was. The first driveway on the west, no, just Ms. Betty's.
Is there any curb and gutter on Locust in the base bid, like right there?
Just, just, just the, I'm gonna say eighty-five to ninety feet, so roughly fifty feet either side of the box. Is included in the base bid. Now, we might, we won't, probably won't change the curb and gutter, but that railing, we might, you know, to save a little funds, we could, you know, from, instead of eighty-five feet, which is exactly what that concrete wall is now, that's why we started out with eighty-five feet. Is there a reason to be that long? Maybe there's not much of a drop-off yet right behind that, and we can cut that to seventy feet or something and still be, create a safe environment. So that's what we'll take a look at, and we'd still probably keep the curb at that eighty-five or ninety feet, because it does need to be replaced for sure in that length, but we can shorten up the, the new wall and the railing.
I'm curious, as the, obviously you can ask any question you want, but with your question about the, do you feel like the guttering, I mean, the curbing along that is needing attention?
At Locust, do you mean?
Uh huh, yeah.
No, I was just curious what, because of where that drainage comes in, how much in the base bid was included in that?
Yeah, because we, there's a dip, you know, there's that bad dip there, and both the curb is settled, so we have to replace that section of curb, because it's settled out and it's got a belly in it, as well as the street.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay. The curbing on the rest of Locust, if you compare it to the rest of curbing in town, I'm gonna say is less than average compared to the, most of the other average curbing in town. Is it falling apart like the Elm Street curb? No. Elm Street curb, we found this when we did the first section a couple of years ago, and the rest of Elm Street is this way, and probably on up Elm Street, almost all the way past your place and maybe even as far as yours. That was all limestone chips with a one-inch concrete skim coat. So that curb and gutter really is only one inch thick concrete over limestone chips. And that's why, if, from Ms. Betty's other driveway, if you want to get reference, there's a hole there. Just below her one driveway that is now about five feet long and the width of the gutter, where over time that concrete was gone, and so now every time we get a big rain coming down that big hill, it washes more chips out of there. So that hole just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Are you talking up to where her mailbox is, and then there's that strip of concrete that everybody kind of uses as a sidewalk to cross? Is that, what is that right there?
Oh, that, that's an old waterline patch.
Okay, because everybody kind of uses it as a crosswalk.
Yeah, they do, but that's a waterline patch from years and years and years ago.
Okay.
My only other question, I guess, and I think you've done this in the past, but anywhere that they're taking up Brick Street, they're going back with Brick.
That's correct. We have a line item in here for removing and reset Brick. The only thing we're not sure of is right where the tube is on Elm Street, we've had to patch with asphalt. And we're hoping we can get those bricks cleaned. If we can't, we no longer have a city stockpile of Brick. So we might have to look at some alternatives for that Brick. But we've got a couple of other spots. There's two more closer to Main Street and Elm Street where there's a depression. And most likely, when you line stuff up, it's because the sewer line, something with the sewer main, has settled out a little bit. And so we actually have on with this project to go to those areas, and somewhere about the size of this table, to actually remove and reset the Brick in several other locations this size. Once again, that could be something that we could pull out of the contract if we needed to get down to a dollar amount. But yes, where those new tubes are going in are up on Locust Street, the intent is to put the Brick back.
So when you said, like, you were looking at the contingencies and maybe, does that just then go back to vote as the low bid that gets the chance to adjust, or how does?
No, see, we're not adjusting unit prices. All we're saying, so, so, so like, for example, so for example, if I pull, if I pull, if I were to pull a hundred lineal feet of curb off of Boots, yes, I would take a look to make sure that that didn't make, if I pulled the same hundred off of Hett, that he didn't become low bidder.
Okay.
I, I mean, looking ahead though, at the pricing on line items like curb and gutter, which is where the main bulk of the contingency was at, Hett's curb price and Boots' curb price were almost identical. So even if I pulled five hundred feet off, it would not make a lot of difference.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
But yes, we will take that into consideration, yes.
Okay.
Anything, Tim? So Darren, am I correct that this is basically being?
This is for informational purposes tonight only, and so you can take a look at it and, and ask whatever questions we wanted to, but just for financial purposes, we're gonna hold off on the award until January sixth.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Not a problem. If you've got any other questions, feel free to ask via staff to us.
What was the timeline for getting that done?
We, we just said it had to be done by next summer, completed, and I looked at all three of them now, I'm trying to remember. I believe Davy had said he would start February first, and we've given him ninety working days to complete. Or up to. And I'm pretty sure Boots Park has said, as weather permits. In other words, they don't want to start when the snow's still flying, so it kind of depends on what we get into February, March looks like. So I would anticipate probably a mid-February, I'm sorry, mid-March type start, and that's what we've recommended to them, so, because what we don't want to do is be sitting here in mid-May, first of June, and get those big rains again when we got that stuff open. We want to get those tubes in there, the new stuff in there before we potentially see those bigger events. So what I've talked to them both about, I talked to all of them, all of these companies came and talked to us during bidding to go over some things. And I made the recommendation to do the tubes and the Locust head wall piece first, and then we can move to curb and gutter. Because curb and gutter will be a little more manageable to, oh, hey, there's raining in the forecast, three days from now, we can play around with that a little better, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Our next item, John Deardoff's here to talk about the city administrative search.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Good to be back with you again. First of all, appreciate you all filling out your surveys, and I'm not quite sure I'm used to the survey yet, but I hope, I don't know if it helped you guys or not, but the idea of it is to really begin to develop the profile, you know, what, what requirements you're looking for in your new administrator, and some of the characteristics that you want to see there. And so I thought we might just run through that real quick, and we can kind of get through this, and then what'll happen after tonight, once we come to some agreement, that we'll put together the community profile, which is a nice document about your community, and then obviously the job ad, which is what's placed in all the publications, is specifically what you're looking for, you know, benefits, salary, those kinds of things. So one of the first things was the years of experience, and I think most of you, or there were five, that listed zero to four, am I correct there? And there was one that had five to nine, so the consensus appeared to be somebody with experience, you know, zero or one to four years of experience. And, and we can just talk about each one of these as we go through it, and if anybody has any issues with that, you know, we can, we can certainly talk about that, so.
Only speaking for myself, I think I was trying to be realistic here. I want to get a city administrator hired, you know, I, I, yeah, I'd love to have somebody with fifteen years' experience, leaving Overland Park to come here, but realistically, we're gonna have to look for someone that's younger in the profession, so that's.
Well, it opens the range to candidates that are looking to, and you may get what you said, that fifteen years, or you may get two years, and, you know, that'll help with the pool, I think, too, so. The next one was education, and basically, you know, we talked about bachelor's degree in public administration or related field. When we say related field, you know, it could be a business degree, a finance degree, there's a lot of things that relate to that. And three of you had required and three had preferred, and we talked about masters in public administration, there was one that preferred that. And typically what we've seen is, or what we've used in the past, is, you know, a bachelor's degree in public administration or related field in an MPA is preferred. But that doesn't disqualify a candidate that doesn't have the MPA, and there may be candidates that are currently working on that, you know, online or MPA for a deal, so. What, are you all comfortable with that then? Yeah. Okay. Then, oh, the other thing I want to talk about, yeah, I'm glad I saw that, can experience be substituted for education? And that's an important, important thing here. And that, that really is coming into play in some searches I've been involved with, in that, you know, there are candidates that may not have the, the education, but, you know, they've been a public works director, you know, city engineer, or whatever you might have with a lot of experience in, in, in city government. And sometimes those turn out pretty well. We, we hired one in, I think it was in Mount Ridge, had a public works director there. So I like, and it's up to you all, but I kind of like that experience can be substituted for education, but again, that's your, your call, and that would be important, because if, if it's strictly education is one of the, one of the levels you have, then I'm not gonna apply if I don't have that. I've been a public works director in so-and-so city for the last fifteen years, I know a lot about cities, and some, some cities, the public works director, because they don't have an administrator manager, is quote the administrator, so. So do you want to leave in the experience can be substituted for education?
I would think so.
All right, okay. Okay, then, a couple of other things. On the characteristics profile, and this will be something that'll come into play when we put this job advertisement together, so that we can let the candidates know specifically what you guys, what you're all looking for, you know, specifically. And, and of course, budgeting was, was number one. I think everybody had, had that listed, or checked that in your priorities. Economic development was, was the next highest, and then kind of all of these pretty much had five of you, the grant writing, strategic planning, team-oriented, reliable, work ethic, professional, and approachable. And those were all five votes or more for that, that list of characteristics or on the profile. So, and, you know, it's kind of important, I think, to, to list those things, because I know as candidates, if, if, you know, budgeting and finance is a really an important thing to you, and, you know, that's not really my strong suit, you know, kind of like Mark, you know, it's not really, that's actually his strong suit probably, so. So, you know, they may say, well, they're looking for somebody different there, but, so I think it's important to have in there, you know, kind of those four or five or six specific things that you all are looking for in your next city administrator, their, their skill requirements. And again, once we bring this all back, you'll, you'll get to see a final, you know, review of what this job profile looks like, what the job advertisement looks like, and you'll be able to amend it or change it and have all that opportunity before we start putting it out on the street, so. And then, just to comment a couple of things on the, you know, the, the local issues, and, and these I think are important for candidates to know, you know, economy, business climate, housing, affordable housing, that seems to be an issue in every community in the, in the state of Kansas. And, and then, you know, there were a few other comments there as well. Biggest challenges facing your community, housing, economic development, kind of divided into support existing business as well as attract new business, and then infrastructure and, and equipment needs, which also is a pretty common theme in a lot of, a lot of communities, so. So I guess I really just kind of want to open it up and see if there's any, anything we missed. Again, as I said earlier, you'll have an opportunity to kind of review all of these. Once you see it all put together, I think it's gonna be a little easier for you to kind of look at and say, eh, I don't know if I like the way that reads, but we can certainly play that, so.
John, you, unless I just blinked out for a minute, you skipped the part with regard to who is responsible for a certain thing. Did you do that on purpose?
I did, and I tell you why I did that. And I've talked to the league about it, I'm not sure how relevant that is. I mean, I, and you guys, I was gonna ask for your feedback on that, because usually when I look at it, the city charter pretty much lays out, you know, whose responsibility is this and whose is that. Not always the case, but it, and so I, I kind of skipped over that, but if you want to, or I did skip over that. Is there something on there that, that you wanted to comment on? I, I just don't know how valuable that is to the actual search and the profile development piece.
I thought it was good in terms of when we get a person or persons that we're interviewing, it might be good to see what they're both feeling on it, on some of these topics are versus I, and I looked at it, and I look at it, and I just saw this today. You know, it looks like for the most part, we were fair, everyone here was fairly similar on, on most of these things.
Exactly.
So we can find some consensus there, but if, you know, just the very first one, hiring and firing of, of city personnel, if somebody said, well, if I'm gonna be the administrator, I'm not taking a hit on that, the council has to do it all. Well, it'd be good to know that.
Yeah, no, I, I, you make a good point there, and I think that is interesting, because I, I, I spent a little time on that today. You talked about like the hiring and firing, and of course, you know, seven people had the city administrator and, and six the governing body. And governing body probably only hires, I'm not sure how it works here, is it just one employee?
There's a couple.
There's a couple, yeah, yeah. Okay, and that's typically what it is in some administrative board of government, so. Is there, is there anything there that you think we need to talk about in terms of, that get people straight on exactly where the responsibilities lie?
Is there anything here that any of you see that you thought was just absolutely, it should be A, and it looks like most of us thought it was B or C that you want to address? Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, I, I think it's, it's good to have that, and I really was kind of wanting some feedback in terms of how important that particular question is on, on the survey, and that you all would fill out, and I was gonna talk with Nikki about that, and if it's of some value, then, because the leagues use that for, for some time. It wasn't something I used before, when I, before I started with them, but I'm just curious.
I just thought it was gonna be helpful when we either are interviewing someone or, or after they're interviewed and hired, to say, okay, now let's make sure we're all on the same page in a bunch of good categories.
That's a good, that's a good point, and that's something we can hang on to, and when candidates come through, we can make sure, you know, they're all, we're all on the same page, or you are with them, so. Just to kind of, again, what I said, we'll put this all together, and I've written narrative for you to look at and review and approve. And I think Nikki sent some information to Mark, maybe to give some, some of the details of the city that we'll need in that, and we'll get that. So looking at the calendar, you know, we're, I was thinking, if we can get this wrapped up, maybe December sixteenth, which is your next meeting, it's two weeks from tonight, that you would be able to review what we've prepared and approve that, and then we can start posting later that week, December twentieth. And, you know, maybe look at a resume deadline of, you know, five weeks is, is five or six weeks. You know, five, five weeks is obviously thirty-five days, or you want to go forty-five, about six weeks, so. We need to talk a little bit about that, and I don't know, time-wise, I don't think we're in any, you're in any big crunch here, push that I, that I know of. So I would just be, you know, usually the five to six week is plenty. You get out longer than that, then you lose a lot of, a lot of interest in people that see it come out right away, oh, wow, I'm really interested in that. Well, you know, six weeks from now, they've got another job somewhere else, or, so. I'd probably recommend five weeks. And, you know, it's happened a couple of times where we've looked at the five-week window, and boy, coming up to that five-week window, we just didn't really see what we, what you're looking for, or you didn't, and then we might have to extend that for some reason. I hope we don't have to do that, but that's certainly a possibility, so.
Are you having that five weeks fall the week of the twentieth or the twenty-seventh of?
I was thinking that we'd have it posted by the twentieth.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm saying, starting that, whatever that next Monday is, is that?
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, yeah, yeah, so it'd be that week, and then that would be a full week, and then before after that.
Okay.
Let's see, what else did I have? Oh, and the other thing. I talked about a salary survey, and I haven't got all that information back, but I've gotten probably four of the six cities that, that I've asked to, to provide me with that, with basically, you know, what their salary is, how many employees they have, population, do they provide deferred comp, you know, car allowance, phone allowance, just that whole package. To give you an idea of where kind of people are at, other cities are, and trying to do it within this area, for the most part, similar sized cities. Looking at Sterling, Ellsworth, Harrington, Hillsborough, I think that's the four I had. Ellsworth, Harrington, Hillsborough, I think that's the four I had. So, and I've got some of that salary information with them, but that's something that I'll, when you guys approve the profile, the job advertisement, I'll have that survey submitted with that, and then you can decide kind of where you want to start. You know, we, we've had that conversation about where we think we ought to be in the market, and looking at the survey, I think that's probably going to be, be where we need to be. But we don't have to, we don't really have to talk about that tonight, because I'd really like you to see that survey, you know, with your own eyes, and kind of compare it before we, before we agree on that. We've got a couple of weeks to do that, so.
Questions? Mark, the information you're going to be sending John, I mean, some of it's just flat, here's the official census, population, or whatever. Do we, are we allowed to, I guess, point out some positives in that as well? I, and where I'm going with it is, I, I think we, yes, Marion is whatever it is, nineteen-hundred and something, but with that County Lake setting right there, most of those people, I think, feel themselves to be, well, as much a part of this community as they do anywhere else, and there are a lot of people that are full-time, that's their residence out there, and I just feel like that would be good information for a prospective candidate to know that you've got that, and you've got the Federal Reservoir just on the other side. It also has a population, there's not nearly as big, and, and they're kind of equidistant between here and Hillsborough, but nevertheless, they're, the lake's there, so I think it makes it a more attractive place to live.
Yeah, you have a golf course, you have things.
Yeah, we'll.
John, do you have a sample?
I, I had that one from Sterling last time, and I.
If you send that to me, I'll try to get that out.
But, but basically, it's a, let's tell our story about, there's a lot of good things going on here, let's, you know, school districts, you know, the, the lakes, the recreation, and so it's a, it's probably typically a four or five-page document.
Okay, good, all right.
Four or five-page document that a candidate will get, but what we've actually put in the advertisements will only be, you know, the paragraph, if you know what I mean, so yeah.
Got a golf course that humbled Mark McInerney apparently.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, bud.
And we need, we need good pictures, too, and that's the other thing, we always want to make sure we get some good pictures from here, and I, you know, I think you can help us with that, but, and probably not of him swinging the club, so.
He's seen me play golf.
But that, that'll be something you'll get a review and, and what have you, before we get it all, all put together, so.
Excellent. So, we should look forward to seeing you December sixteenth?
Yep, and I'll bring it, I'll get it back to you. If, if something comes up, we get, because that's your last meeting in December, right?
Unless, we'll talk next week, if there's any meeting adjourned prior to the end of the year, we don't know yet.
Okay, well, we'll, I'm going to talk with Nikki, and we're going to work pretty hard on, on meeting that deadline.
You might mention, I think there's a KACM meeting coming up in the near future.
Yeah.
So John will be, are you going to that?
Yeah, I'm going to be there Thursday, Friday. I've, I got my little, my little note to potential candidates already, so. I, I already started thinking about that, but that's the fun part of it, is to get a hold of people and say, hey, I'd take a look at this, so.
I, I appreciate that, because that's the way I do business, is that kind of little note.
Yeah.
Everyone else I'm dealing with anymore has their phone, and they look for their notes.
Well, I, I, I'm not that guy, so, yeah. Okay, well, great. Merrick, council, thank you again, and if there's any questions that you all have through Mark or whoever, just be sure and let me know, okay? Because my big goal here, through this whole process, is to communicate, communicate, communicate as the process goes on, how we're doing, and go from there, so you know what's going on, so.
Great.
Okay?
Kind of exciting.
Hey, you guys have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we go back to you, Mark.
Yeah, and on the public work vehicle approaches, I'd like to postpone that for two weeks, due to the holidays, and I will gong a little bit. I just haven't got that research like I want to.
Anyone have an issue with that? Okay, we'll just roll it over to the next agenda. And then we're back to you again.
On the, it's my understanding, over the years, that the year-end, you acknowledge employee for the year, and it kept, for lack of better, kind of gave a seasonal adjustment or whatever at the end of the year. I, I've been told it's been a hundred dollars, you try to make a hundred, so you budget a little bit more for their final paycheck of the year, and I, I've been quiet, if that's something you want to do again this year?
Well, we talked about it at the work session. No one really indicated any objection to it at that time. I think it's a good idea. If you look at the total number of employees, and the amount that we're talking about, it's not, in terms of the total, it's not that huge an amount, but if you're, you know, a hundred dollars is a hundred dollars, and I think that we have people that are working hard and trying hard, that have been kind of beat down, and I think are on an upward path, and I would like to acknowledge that.
I agree.
So, I'll make a motion that we do a seasonal holiday employee recognition salary adjustment.
Jesus, a mouthful.
Wow.
Call it whatever you want.
Maybe we abbreviate.
I, I would, I would move that we give a award to, a cash award to each of our employees, and an amount that after withholding would be roughly a hundred dollars each.
And that would be full-time employees, or?
That's a good question. How many part-time do we have?
Well, how technical do you want to get, do you want to include the fire department? Do you want to include the libraries?
Technically, those are volunteer people. The library has its own budget and system. Let's just talk about people that basically operate out of this building.
Do you have any part-timers right now?
No.
Okay, so you don't have any. And I said out of this building, I would include police department as that.
Public works.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, did we vote on this?
You made a, you made a.
Did anyone second my motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and second, now discussion.
Sorry, jumped the gun there.
That's okay. No discussion, then all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I just have it unanimously. Public forum, anyone wish to speak to the city council about any topic on your mind? You know, Mike, this will be the third time in a row, we can sell you a package that would, rather than paying each time, you can purchase a year's right to speak, and it'll be a lot cheaper for you.
Well, I'll give that some thought.
Okay, you do that.
I had the luxury of getting with Gary Deatonbrook, and got the okay to put his cross monument there at the edge of Lincolnville on our tourist map. We was told that, damn, he said, well, twenty-five was already done, twenty-six will be done later this year, but we could possibly get it on their website. Refer me to Margot, I think she's got that on there with some pictures, it's, and if we want to make some changes in the future, I think we can do whatever we need to, or add something to it as he adds to that, and I'd just like to acknowledge her getting that done for us. And it, to, to think that, I don't know how many doubles there are on these magnets that it talks about, that he's given out, they've been through thirty-five hundred of them in a year's time.
Now, I don't know what you're talking about now, what, what's this?
North of Lincolnville and the west side.
I know that, but what magnets?
That giant cross, if you go up, well, he has a mailbox, and if you open it up, he gives out.
There's refrigerator magnets with pictures, they've got one with the Northern Lights and the Purple Tent, that's just, and some sunsets that they've taken randomly, and it is hard to believe that, I guess his intention was maybe he was going to try to make a little monument and be buried in that area or something, and the people that you see stop there constantly, I mean, it's just amazing, and to give out thirty-five hundred magnets already in a year's time.
Yeah.
Maybe one of our biggest tourist stops within our county, or in the area, and just wanted to, Margot took it upon herself, was just asking her to do that or continue that, and I guess she got Gary's permission, too, or got to talk to him, and I think he's good with it, and who'd ever thought something so minute turned into something that, and we won't talk about the dollars he's got invested in that, but it's, them, a couple of them marble statues were, between the two of them's like a hundred and fifty or sixty thousand, made in Italy and shipped over here. There's some, what, several hundred yards of concrete holding them things up, that pipe that it's made out of, this half-inch wall stuff that they put together in their shop, it's been quite the project, and they're trying to get lighting over there, which, trying to cross the railroad tracks is kind of an issue, or a hindrance, but again, I think it's something that, it gets talked about throughout the state, people stop constantly, they'll be kneeling there and just, the only thing he hasn't let me do is put a sign on the mailbox, mail your letters to heaven here. I think it would be very intriguing what we might get in that deal, but we'll see, and I think Gary's appreciative, too, so, just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Meyer?
A rare time when I will, I don't know, say something, but I, somewhere in my misspent middle age, I ran a website that was one of the first places that got online applicants for jobs, and I will tell you, if I were you, I would delay that December twentieth. There's two things about online ads for jobs, people like to look at the most recent ads, and the period from Christmas to New Year's is the deadest time in the world, so I might recommend you delay it until January first, I think you'd get a better response rate.
That, that does make sense.
Yeah, I mean, if it's being posted on the twentieth, it's Christmas time, and.
But that'd be the first one of your Christmas.
Well, when John comes, I.
I'll let him know.
Yeah, I mean, I, we can talk about, I guess, if there's any disagreement, but it, that it just makes, it's logical. Thank you. And you stay within your time period.
One minute and twenty-three seconds left.
No, Mike, you can't have any of Eric's time. Let's go to department heads and councillor reviews. Start back in the corner with you, Mark.
I've got the microphone, I guess. We had a really great, holly jolly Christmas. It, it was a good one. We appreciated everybody that helped make it happen, everybody that came out and participated and shopped and in the parade, and, I mean, it took a lot of people to make all that happen. Jean, Jean was involved, and Zach, and, and Kevin was in the parade, and I don't know who I'm forgetting, but it was great. The vendors upstairs, normally, it would kind of start dying off about two o'clock, you know, and we'd go till three, not this year, there were people still coming in at three o'clock, and it, it was just, I was very pleased, very pleased with the whole thing. I haven't heard anything bad, and everybody had fun, and, yeah, so, we'll do it again year number six next year, so.
Cool.
It was great.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
It was a good time.
Steven? Steven passes, that's, I did that in law school a lot, you'd say pass, and then just move on down. Go ahead, James.
I, I don't have anything tonight.
Zach?
Nope.
Nobody? Thank you, you can turn that off, James. Mark?
I'd just like to thank the public work staff and the water plant in particular. As you know, they repainted, we had the tower, and it was down for about sixty days, and it's a lot of work, and it turned out to be a good project, it backed live, they passed all the certification tech from KDHE, so they did a good job, so I think everybody likes the way it looks, and it was a good, good project.
It does look really nice.
Thank you. Janet?
No.
Amy?
Mine's kind of silly, but they had a little petting zoo at the library, and actually, Phyllis, I was talking to you there, a lot of people inquired about having goats in the community. I know, but there's, I actually looked into it, and Wichita, Lawrence, Olathe, Kansas City, Topeka, Dodge City, they allow goats in communities, and I, I, I thought I'd bring it up. I mean, I'd rather listen to a goat once in a while than a dog, half these dogs, you know, that are barking nonstop in neighborhoods. I like dogs, but they use them for, in Wichita, they use them to go clean out parks where they have poison ivy, and, and, I mean, it's, they have like a limit, I believe, like two, you have to have them secured. It's kind of, I, I thought I'd bring it up for them. They were adorable, I don't want one, but they're cute. I can see it.
All of the places you mentioned are metropolitan areas for the most part.
Yeah.
I think most people around here that want goats live in the country where they can have goats, but I'm not saying I'd know, but I'd need somebody to come up with a specific proposal that I could discuss, that think about.
Yeah.
Because currently, I believe it just says no farm animals, and a lot of, in the sense, except for maybe ten chickens. What's the deal on the chickens?
How many?
Chickens are allowed.
I don't think chickens are.
But no roosters.
But people have, I know people in town have.
There must be some chickens in order that can be cocked a little, too, then.
You know, you have a bunch of hens in a trash rooster.
At least I'm not the only one that's heard that.
When the goat's standing on top of your hundred thousand dollar vehicle.
I, I, I don't want a goat, I just said I would mention it. I mean, they're, they're cute, some of them are little, you know, I don't know.
That's fine, no, I don't mean to ridicule.
No, you're not, no, I just, it's a, it's a thought, I guess.
Zach?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Stephen and Electric Crew, I think the Christmas lights looked really nice downtown, and that Christmas, the, what's now the Christmas tree in the park looks, looks really good, so. I know it takes a lot of time to keep those lights up and functioning, and get them back up and functioning, you know, before we turn them back on, it looks really nice, so, thank you.
Since you.
My five-year-old also commented, she said it looked really good, but she thought it looked better last year. I said I'd pass that along.
Since you said that, it reminds me, I've been really, I want to just give Stephen a shout out, because I think my experience with him recently has been, he's been proactive about things, not just, oh, there's a problem, we need to solve it, as opposed to wait till it becomes crisis, but also just in having ideas, just saying, hey, you know, we did this, we could do that, and I just salute. Is that it for you?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, and this was brought up, oh, gosh, over a year ago, but from what I hear about the use of the pickleball courts at the school facility for winter leagues and stuff, it's crazy popular, and we really need to have outdoor pickleball court, courts, court, and I know you worked on that, Roger Hannaford brought it up, but I, I just want to, I don't have anything real to say, other than I don't want that to fall off the radar.
We've had a gentleman down to look at it, he could, they were busy, we'd have, and I can bring it back, we'd have to decide exactly what you want to do. We look at, we'd look at the tenant courts over by the rec commi, rec center.
Yeah.
And, would you take one out? There, there's all kinds of options, we'll probably put that on a future meeting to talk about. And he's a, that guy puts them in all over the Midwest, they're, they're really good out of Wichita.
Can't hear a thing you're saying.
Maybe that's good. He doesn't like it anymore.
And Councilor turned their, it's tennis and pickleball courts on theirs, so it looks really nice.
Oh, so it's dual-use?
So, something to think about.
Hey, Kevin, did you look into that, too?
Yeah, and what we looked at, because Mark and I met with, he had a gentleman that came, what was the name of the company?
I bet was, Darrell Snyder's.
So he came down and met with us, and we went to the ones at the East Park, and you can't really have a dual-use, I mean, what we looked at was getting rid of one tennis court, and I think we figured we could get three pickleball courts in there and still leave one tennis court.
I like the idea of leaving a tennis court.
I don't know that you would really, I really think you could actually get four pickleball courts across the one tennis court and still leave a tennis court, because, you know, I don't know that we would need more than that, and then we actually even went and looked in the back of the park back there, but I don't think that was where the basketball court and stuff is, that didn't seem as viable as what the ones up at the East Park did, so. So, yeah, maybe we can get back a. So, yeah, maybe we can get back ahold of that guy and see if he came up with some dollar figures and.
He did, he did a bunch of pickleball courts in Emporia and he's at Nebraska, he's all over. And, uh,
Because I went, I went and looked at, I think it was at Clay Center and Wamigo that had done the same thing and taken out like an existing pickleball court or existing tennis court and converted them into, and then they still left a tennis court or wherever there as well, so. Yeah, we can get back on that. Because I think there, I think there's thirty, I think there's thirty-two teams in that rec pickleball.
Wow.
The schools go over there and use a different, it's always busy.
Yeah, it's fun.
Uh, also, and this is again just a, um, Mark, we, we've got some streets and I'm thinking specifically of Cobal. And I know you know that has, between the two building projects, the original four or five houses and then the most recent four gotten pretty beat up and, and I definitely agree that would have been silly to have put a lot of money into fixing up a street only to have another immediate project, but I just want to, when, I, I would like the council to have some input in prioritizing streets. I mean, I get it, we need our, uh, staff's involvement and, and ideas as well as the engineer, but I really would like the council to at least be involved in, in the discussion of that.
And I'm, my understanding, I think you used Darren before to help you do that.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
I'll get with both of them.
We just ought to review the entire capital improvement plan.
I would love to do that.
To include, I mean, that would include more than just the streets, but the streets would be a part of it.
That, that could be a study session unto itself, I think, just doing that. That might be a, something to keep in mind. Okay, that's it for me. I'm sorry.
Don't really have anything any different. Just reiterate, like Zach said about the Christmas decorations and I know there's a lot of people involved in the holly jolly thing, but I think Margot has a tremendous amount to do with that or at least getting the ball rolling anyway, so. I think you guys did a good job. I thought it was a good turnout. It seemed like a lot of people down. It's kind of hard to see when the lights were all out downtown, but seemed like a lot of people.
We go back and forth on that.
No, I thought it seemed good. Everybody I talked to had a good time and had a good experience, so, thank you.
I just didn't think they turned the lights on back kind of as the parade was done downtown and had a lot of kids running around. Some parade participants coming back through and it was dark, dark.
Well, Tim always takes his brood down there hoping they'll lose one.
We weren't there this year, right now.
Tim?
Um, the one thing I was going to mention tonight, take advantage a little bit of our social online, um, opportunity here. The Marion Advancement Campaign is, um, having a Giving Tuesday, which is tomorrow. And so this will probably be aired on YouTube here tomorrow. So anyone that is listening, if you do want to, um, do any sort of charitable donations for the Marion Advancement Campaign, they have six different, um, causes within the community and local communities. And at the end of the meeting, I think Jean is going to post the website for those that are interested in that, and as well as all three of the local banks have information about that too, so. Just if anyone wants to look into something like that, I just thought I'd mention that it's available and it's happening tomorrow. And there's like twenty thousand dollars worth of matching funds, so, um, it's kind of neat to see what, what projects they have and see if there's something anyone's interested in, so.
Anything else? Anyone have anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We'll see you December sixteenth. Thank you.
I should get a little here, stick under that box.
I got one under, I got a year, I can haul it down here when I can.
It's going to be open for five weeks at this point about.
Oh, okay.
Lower reason.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm assuming.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to leave it. I've got this for like, too much.
I'm sure they'll still take it.
Oh, don't, hey, just be watching.
Here's the paperwork, Janet.
Thanks, Tim.